Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You're at the Livingston County Board of Commissioners' agenda for March 25, 2024. It's 6:00 PM. I'm officially calling the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of prayer. Kindly remove your hats and bow your head. O Lord, our heavenly Father, be Thou present, God of wisdom, and direct the deliberations of this honorable Assembly of Commissioners. Enable us to settle matters on the best and surest foundation. May truth, liberty, and justice flourish and prevail here in all Livingston County and in our United States. Amen. Item number three. Would you kindly stand and participate in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you would perform the roll call.
Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Helserman.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
For Miss President.
Thank you kindly. Item number five, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
I move to approve this evening's agenda with the removal of item 6B due to the recipient's inability to attend this evening.
Any second.
Support.
There is support. Moved by Commissioner Fiani, supported by Commissioner Domas. Discussion. It's my understanding and report that Judge Hattie has been called to Lansing on an emergency matter and cannot be here. And I think it's appropriate to get, to take 6B off. I can report that I've delivered the certificate and recognition to Sarah. Already done. Any further discussion after that? All those kindly voice vote aye if you're in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero would be unanimous. 6B is off the agenda for those reasons stated. We're at six. Oh. We do have an agenda as amended. We're moving on to 6A, employee recognition. Commissioner Deaton, you're the Chair of that particular committee. Would you rise and perform?
Thank you, Chairman. This is one of the coolest and most humbling things we get to do is I'm the chairman of this group, so this is the second time in a row you get to see me. So this is pretty cool. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read the recognition and then I'll invite Karina up. And then I believe her boss, the director, would like to say a few words as well, what it says here. So we'll go in that order. So I'll start by reading this. So employee recognition, Karina Jaeger. Some background information. Employed by Livingston County for nearly 11 years as an administrative specialist. Spent nine years in the building department, ultimately taking a position with the Environmental Health Division and Health Department where she appears to be flourishing. Karina's winning nomination. So Karina received three external nominations from visitors to the Health Department. So these are our customers. Karina provides outstanding service by always following up, being thorough, helpful, polite, professional, patient, and super efficient, especially whenever we need environmental health reviews for obtaining our building permits. The second one reads, Karina never hesitates to find the answers we need when requested. She takes the time to look up and explains it as necessary. And the third one, Karina was very helpful and nice to deal with. She made me more sure about wanting to move to Livingston County. Very cool. In Karina's nominations, to really understand this, you have to know that Karina is nominated nearly every quarter, consistently being praised for her helpfulness, great attitude, professionalism. So with the current nominations and this background, the committee looked at the third nomination's last words. Made me positive how I wanted to move to Livingston County. So that's just a great ombudsman for us. The committee felt that so much, this was the very words, that really, this is what our job is all about, serving the citizens with smiles and helpful attitudes, sharing kindness and professionalism that is in turn makes Livingston County a great place to live. The committee felt that Karina is consistently an extraordinary employee, serving the public and making Livingston County a great place to work and live. And she is exceptionally deserves this honor. So Karina, would you please come forward? Congratulations. What I'm going to do is read the certificate, Employee Recognition Award Certificate presented to Karina Jaeger. An appreciation for outstanding service, Livingston County Employee Recognition Program, fourth quarter 2023. We are proud to recognize your remarkable achievements and exceptional contributions to the Health Department and Livingston County community. So I'm going to give this to you. And then mostly because it's my committee and my other hat is I'm a district commander for the American Legion. And there's a lot of things I do, and I believe it's important to put a challenge coin with everybody. It's Bravo Zulu moment, and this is something from the military. And when you do something exceptional, we'd like to hand this to you. Thank you for the exceptional work.
Well, Karina, congratulations. I didn't realize all those great things were going to be said about you. I knew that, but I prepared to say very similar things. You were one of the last hires I made leaving Verma Health Director in the Health Department. I'm so pleased that you came over to the Health Department. Your knowledge of both the Building Department and the Health Department really helps our customers to navigate the process of their building permits completed. And I know a lot of people do appreciate that. We appreciate you. We're so happy you're there. Congratulations.
Tradition has it, you got to get a picture with the Commissioners now, so, okay? That's right.
You didn't hurt the ceiling, did you?
The facility's here, fix that.
All right. Thank you, boy.
We're on agenda, item number seven, correspondence. I'm going to turn the matter, I'm going to turn the chair and gavel over to Commissioner Sample because it's my belief that it's important for every Commissioner to have to actually run a full board meeting because it's extremely different when you have to be the guy talking all night long versus following along on the agenda. Commissioner Sample, it's your ship.
Thank you, Chairman Drick. So we're moving on to item number seven, which is correspondence. We have item number A, which is from Washtenaw County. It's a resolution supporting SB 228 to repeal the law preventing local ordinance over plastic bags. Item B, from Washtenaw County, also resolution supporting statewide water affordability legislation. And item number C, Washtenaw County Resolution Supporting the Protect My Kids Bill Package in Michigan Legislature. Can I get a motion to file these correspondences?
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, I'll move on to a voice. For all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number seven is over. We're on to item number eight, which is our first call to the public. We have two calls to the public tonight. You get three minutes in which to address the board. Do we have any cards from the room?
We do. The first will be Tammy Higgins from Iosco Township, followed by Kathleen Yanek.
How you doing this evening?
Good. How are you? Before I get started, I just wanted to say one thing as a compliment to Mr. Drick. As you all know, I'm the Planning Commission Chair of Iosco Township, and I like how you run the meetings, and I try to remember what you do so that my meetings go good, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, now for not the good stuff, but now soon. I'm here for, again, you know, complete streets. And I wanted to thank the Commissioners who came to the Rose Parks Breakfast. That was Helserman, Mr. Gross, and Mr. Martin. I appreciate you guys being there. So some of this you might have heard. Complete streets, what's that definition as far as Act 51 from 1951 and part of Michigan Compiled Law 247660P? Is complete streets means roadways planned, designed, and constructed to provide appropriate access to all legal users in a manner that promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods, whether by car, truck, transit, assistive device, foot, or bicycle. And a complete streets policy means a document that provides guidance for the planning, design, and construction of roadways or interconnected network transportation facilities being constructed or reconstructed and designed for transportation purpose that promotes complete streets. It considers the varying mobility needs of all legal users of the roadway, of all ages and abilities. I don't know if our roads are meeting this here in Livingston County. But this brings me to our Livingston County Master Plan, which I've been asking about for about two years to help, you know, support. You guys are the leaders, you're the top leadership, you set the direction of the county. That has the complete streets policy as the Transit Plan and the Trails Plan, which is, both, all three of those documents are created by our Livingston County Planning Department, which I might add is appointed by you. And that is in the budget. I read the 2024 budget, and it says, "The seven members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the Livingston County Board of Commissioners." And under goals and objectives in that budget, you guys said, "To update and implement the five-year Livingston County Master Plan to guide future development throughout Livingston County." I haven't seen anything in that. And when I look at what you guys budgeted for 2024 for LETS, it's mostly funded by grants and federal and state money. And I think you guys since 2018 are doing an annual transfer. I think that might be transfers in, I don't know, but of $65,000. And maybe that's every year, but that's it? That's all you're doing for, to try to implement this goal and to keep people safe and keep people from getting hit and killed on our roads, both motorists and bicyclists and people walking? And then that leads me to other things about the budget. I mean, $65,000, if that's what you're given per year, that's a very small amount. And then I think about when it comes to other items you funded. And one of the items that come to mind that I thought was really unfair that you did is you guys funded $150,000 to the Brighton Board of Education for the ROTC. Fowlerville High School didn't get that, Hartland, Pinkney, Howell, any of our schools. You took taxpayer money that just went to one of the most wealthy school districts in our, in our, in our county and gave them money. That should have been for the taxpayers there if they wanted it in their school system and for the federal government maybe to support that. Okay, I guess my time's up.
Thank you.
Kathleen Yanek from Ageways Nonprofit Senior Services, followed by Wes Nakagiri.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kathleen Yanek, and I'm the Senior Communications Manager with Ageways Nonprofit Senior Services, which is the new name for the Area Agency on Aging 1B. We changed our name back in January, and I wanted to take this opportunity to come before the board tonight and let you formally know about that change. We changed, made the change because we felt that the change will help people that need us find us a little more easily. We chose Ageways because we feel it better represents what our organization does, which is providing services and support that help older adults live the way that they want to with independence, dignity, and of course, choice and options. We did want to, you know, emphasize that although our name has changed, the structure of our organization has not changed. All those services and supports that we're giving to older adults here in Livingston County have not changed. In fact, again, the structure of our organization has not changed. The Area Agency on Aging 1B remains our legal name. Ageways is a doing business as or DBA, which means any agreements or contracts in place with community partners here in Livingston County will not be impacted at all. And again, services and supports that we're delivering here in Livingston County will not be impacted at all. Our phone number remains the same, so we'll have that continuum of service and folks being able to find us. We do have a new website address, which is ageways.org, which is much better than the collection of letters and numbers that we had before. Our website will continue to, you know, forward to our new website address, so folks will still be able to find us. I did want to, you know, thank this body for their continued support and thank all of our partners here in Livingston County that help us serve the older adults, family caregivers, and people with disabilities in Livingston County. Thank you so much for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got a letter that I was going to present to Judge Hattie tonight. I'm going to read it. It says, Dear Judge Hattie, congratulations on your retirement. May God grant you many years. During our years working together, I hope I have not offended you. My investigation of overstaffing at Livingston Courts was never personal. Rather, I was performing my duty as a Commissioner to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of county government. My first year as a Commissioner, I was startled to read a report concluding that Livingston County Courts had a significant excess of staff in 2010. Commissioned by the State Court Administrative Office, the National Center for State Courts performed a workload study. This NCSC study concluded that our county had a surplus of 6.3 quasi-judicial officers. This excess has since been exacerbated as caseloads have declined over 50% from 2010 to 2022. I am disappointed that you, your colleagues, and the Board of Commissioners have not been able to cleverly resolve this overstaffing. Additionally, it is perplexing that we were not able to resolve our differences in mediation. I thought it was imminently reasonable for the county to fund your request to implement the results of the recent classification and compensation study in return for allowing NSCS to conduct another workload study. It is dismaying that the courts have now sued the Board of Commissioners. I look forward to a forum where the entire truth will come out, both in the court of law and the court of public opinion. Best wishes to you, Judge, for a long and happy retirement. Regards, Wes Nakagiri, District Four Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more cards?
Yes. Lisa Resmarnowicz from Hamburg Township, followed by Tim Quinn.
It's been a while. It's good to see you all. I wanted to comment on the grant money for the marijuana education. And in reading through the documents, it states that there's going to be a webpage on the Livingston County Health Department's website that will include information about safe storage, safe use, and the potential harms of misusing marijuana. I would like to propose that there, that's changed to the harm of using marijuana, period. I don't know if you saw the news recently. There was a study that came out from Massachusetts General Hospital that shed light on the connection between marijuana use and the risk of heart attack and stroke. Some of the key findings were even using it one time per month, it's associated with a higher risk of both heart attacks and strokes, and the risk escalates with more frequent use. They had nearly 435,000 patients aged 18 to 74. Some were daily cannabis users, some not. But the results were daily cannabis users had a 25% higher likelihood of heart attacks and a 42% higher risk of strokes. And those who used it once a week had a 3% increase like, of likelihood of heart attacks and 5% higher increase of strokes. That's just related to heart. Mental health implications and marijuana and psychosis. There was a case study, Madison McIntosh, a 24-year-old who'd been vaping potent THC, experienced alternating depression and euphoria. He eventually exhibited psychotic symptoms leading to a diagnosis of cannabis-induced psychosis. There is a two to five times higher risk of psychotic disorders among daily users of high THC marijuana. And we know that's all there is, is the high THC, seriously. What's coming in, it's not what we smoked when we were growing up. I didn't inhale. But I also wanted to thank you, too, for keeping our community a rural feel, other community. I love that our taxes are low. I'm helping my daughter and her husband move from Canton to this area because taxes are low. I know that our neighboring communities to the south of us, their taxes, I see it every day because I'm in the, in the business. Their taxes in Ann Arbor can be $15,000 to $20,000 a year. I don't want that. I don't want bike lanes. We have trails and trails for bikes. We have sidewalks. I like to keep our community rural and keep our taxes low. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Quinn, Genoa Township, followed by Colleen Quinn.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, evening. I'm Tim Quinn. I'm a precinct delegate in Genoa Township, Precinct One. I'm going to build a little bit on what Ms. Lisa just said. I urge you to oppose Resolution 2024-03-032, Resolution to Accept 2024 Grant Funding from the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Cannabis Regulatory Agency Health Department as it relates to the recreational use of marijuana. We know that marijuana is a mind-altering drug. Grants such as this implicitly imply that it's okay to use and abuse these substances. While this is seemingly well-intentioned, we know the road to hell was paved with good intentions. We ask you that you would, you know, consider rejecting this proposal. And as a board, you guys have done really well. I mean, for all your constituents, we'd like to see you continue to go that right way. Do the right thing. Do the next right thing. We've got people that are, the demographics are, excuse me, I'm having a little issue here. They're hard to understand because it's not just one section of people, whether old or young. This is a problem. It's going to continue to be a problem. And I think what we've done as a society, we've accepted it and said, well, it's okay. It's not that big of a problem. But I think we all know that it creates problems, and we can't keep pushing them under the carpet. So we would ask you to really take into consideration, you know, the next step. Do the right thing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Quinn, Genoa Township, followed by Chuck Wright.
Good evening. I am a precinct delegate, Genoa Township, also. And I want to echo what Lisa said and what Tim said. And as I pull the agenda for this meeting, I was surprised and concerned to see this Resolution 2024-03-032 about the cannabis funding. And then when I read the backup that was associated with it, I was even more surprised to learn that last year we had similar funding, and then we formed a partnership with Washtenaw County. I don't even know how I missed that, but I'm mad at myself about that. And I would ask, why are we fooling around with this? And I might be taking a leap here, but I for one, for one, don't want to see cannabis and pot shops in our county. And from my perspective, this is just the stepping stones that will encourage that. So as I looked at page 72 in the backup materials, I see that the Livingston County Health Department's mission is to protect, preserve, and promote the health and safety of the people of Livingston County. Our vision is that Livingston County will be a safe and healthy community where all people realize their fullest health potential and live in rich, productive lives. It stands that this project directly aligns with our strategic plan and top priorities. Really? I mean, this was all nice flowery words, and I will recognize and support a differentiation between recreational and medical use of this, but I think we're headed down a bad path. I understand that the Health Department anticipates the impact of this grant to be a safer and healthier community. However, as a resident, I feel it's going to have the opposite effect. Over time, turn us into a community of pot shops. And as I looked at the next Resolution, 2024-03-033, again, here we are getting grant monies for speakers and lunches. Please stop accepting this money. We went through this with COVID. Funding always comes with strings attached. And as a taxpayer in this state, I thoroughly resent my money going to this kind of stuff. I appreciate all you guys are doing, though you're doing a great job. Thank you.
The last card I have is Chuck Wright, Handy Township.
I just wanted to thank the board for creating the Health Advisory Committee. And now tonight, you're going to staff that committee. Thank you for doing that. And I think most of my appreciation goes to the members that have volunteered to be on the committee. They deserve the most thanks.
No further cards? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I have two, Commissioner. I have Stephanie Micklos.
Micklos.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Micklos, City of Howell. I'd like to, one, I'd like to bring up maybe a point of order for you all is that you have not yet put out your meeting from March 11th for the public to see. And I think, you know, it's been two weeks now that should be out there. Couple other things. One is the transportation issue. I find it just appalling that you wouldn't fund public transportation when there's a definite need for it. And how dare you take a swipe at Judge Hattie on his retirement? No wonder he wouldn't show up to have to listen to that. I mean, about as kind as I can say that much. What else? Oh, and you guys taking credit for the ARPA funds? That's laughable, too. That was Joe Biden that gave us that money. And I guess my last point would be about the cannabis, which I find some of these arguments against it absolutely ridiculous. Believe it or not, there are those among us who have stepped off of alcohol because of cannabis and have lived perfectly healthy lives. You know, for example, I, you know, I run, I work out. I use it for various reasons in edible form. It's in, if you have it from a trusted, regular source, there is no issue there. You're also looking at not damaging your kidney and liver when you use it in the correct form. And not, and here's another thing, you're denying us tax money. Oh, yeah, and the mention about the school appropriating all the money to Brighton and already cash-rich, wealthy school. If that was, if that is true, that's another appalling thing that you would do with our taxpayer money without our consent. I mean, what happened to no taxation without representation? We've made it clear, we'd like you to follow the master plan. That's your job. We want public transportation accessible to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have Cindy McNevich.
Go ahead.
Sorry, hold on.
Cindy?
Hi, Cindy McNevich, Hamburg Township. First off, I want to congratulation, congratulate Judge Hattie on his retirement and the appointment of the new Justice Susan Longsworth. I spoke to you a couple, three weeks ago during the Personnel Committee about the recommendations for the Health Advisory Committee. That's item 12C on tonight's agenda, Resolution 2024-03-032. Um, that's item twelve C on tonight's agenda, resolution twenty twenty-four oh three oh twenty-five. This committee will be making recommendations to the Livingston County Health Department. Looking at the recommendations on who you you are recommending to appoint, I'm wondering how you narrowed down the list to five. I know that there was one urgent care doctor that applied and is not on the list. Given the recent events in the past month, there are several confirmed measles cases in the area. This committee is no longer about mask mandates and COVID precautions. Measles is highly contagious and a preventable disease that is caused by a virus. It can spread through direct person-to-person contact and the air. The measles virus can live in the air for up to two hours. Health officials say ninety percent of unvaccinated people who are exposed to measles will become infected. Measles can cause serious health complications, especially in younger children under five, including death and blindness. One in five people in the U.S. who get the measles will need to be hospitalized. Vaccines and isolation requirements work and save lives. Please let the Health Department do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, I have Oakley eight at Comcast dot net, which I believe is Ben Tassich.
Yes. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Ben Tassich. I live at thirty-four ninety-two Lakewood Shores Drive, District Six, and I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Genoa Township. And I must admit, over Zoom, you don't get the kind of effect that you get when you're at the meeting in person, and I wish I was at the meeting this evening. So apologies for not being able to make it in person. Uh, I'm here to briefly speak about our county public transportation. I I use the word public with a capital P. Uh, I'm a senior citizen. I'm eighty-three years old. Uh, my clock is, my biological clock is ticking. And um, uh, one day I will be losing my license, driver's license, and I will depend on LETS to go grocery shopping, to the doctor, to go to church, and for other necessary things that one must do. And also to deal with isolation, too. I think one of the problems we have in our country, we have so many angry people, is because so many of us are isolated for various reasons. So we need to get out more. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting at nine o'clock in Folerville. And and without LETS services, I probably wouldn't be able to attend that meeting. And tomorrow morning, they're picking me up between eight fifteen and eight forty-five. And they will take me to that meeting, and then they will bring me home at eleven o'clock. And again, we have to thank LETS for that. Uh, and I must speak briefly because I know only have three minutes. I had an opportunity to kind of peruse our county budget, uh, the general budget in the area of public transportation. And from what I understand, and I could be wrong on on this fact, a lot of facts you receive in these public comments are usually not facts. They're mostly, they're opinions in many instances. But that's why I say, uh, I'm not sure about this fact, but uh, our general budget is in a neighborhood of sixty-plus million dollars. And I understand that this year, uh, the Board of Commissioners has given LETS sixty-five thousand dollars to apply towards a grant that they applied for. Uh, I am truly amazed that with so little money that comes from the Board of Commissioners, LETS is able to provide the kind of services they are to over two hundred thousand people in our county. Last year, I think LETS serviced over a hundred and fifty thousand people, and it's growing. And you probably also heard that the senior citizens are also uh multiplying in this community. They're aging very rapidly. Somebody once told me that senior citizens are the ones that have the most money. I I have to laugh at that sometimes, but um, I I am, I'm hopeful that in the near future, this Board of Commissioners uh will begin a conversation, a discussion regarding public transportation. And the time has come that the Board of Commissioners start allocating money from the general fund towards public uh, public transportation. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening. And if I may just say one more thing, someone has told me that alcohol is a gateway drug to marijuana.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you for your time and have a good. Thank you.
Any others on Zoom?
Do you have one more? Janine's iPhone?
Janine. Janine, go ahead.
Janine, you should be able to hit unmute.
Janine, going once. Janine, twice. Janine, three times. Okay, uh, do we have any others for call the public?
I do not see any commissioner.
Thank you very much. Uh, that being said, we'll close the call to the public and we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes listed in categories A, B, C, and D?
So move, Gross.
Second, Drick.
It's been moved and second. Is there any uh comments, additions, deletions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to number ten, which is tabled items from previous meetings, which we have none that I'm aware of. So we'll move on to item number eleven, which is Commissioner Reports. Do we have any commissioners who would like to report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is our resolutions for consideration. There are several. We'll start with item twelve A, which is resolution two zero two four zero three zero two three. This is a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Tax Allocation Board. This appointment has been made by Chairman Drick. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Helzerman. Support Deaton.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I'll ask all those in favor to state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item twelve B, which is resolution two zero two four zero three zero two four. Resolution approving the appointment to the Livingston County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee. This comes to us from the Boards, Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Deaton.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any concerns or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions passed. Item number twelve C is two zero two four zero three zero two five. This is a resolution approving the appointments to Livingston County Health Advisory Committee. It's brought to you by the Board of Commissioners, and the appointments were made by Chairman Drick. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Nakagiri.
Support, Helzerman.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any comments, questions, or concerns on this topic? Commissioner Fiani.
There's a couple amendments I'd like to propose that are more so of a formality purpose, if I may. Um, initially, I move to amend the resolution to strike out language after Austin in the fifth whereas and add in the fifth whereas after Austin the language for a term commencing on May first, twenty twenty-four and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And then add a sixth whereas with language stated in. Whereas, the following appointment has been recommended by the Director of the Livingston County Health Department as a non-voting representative, Lindsay Colbert, for a term commencing on May first, twenty twenty-four and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
We have an.
Support.
Okay, it's been supported. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, it's been seconded. Do you have the writing?
I do. I have a copy of that. That was very handy. Thank you.
So we have uh, an amendment to the resolution. Uh, well, any comments or concerns on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll vote on the, oh, Commissioner Gross.
Chair, um, I'd like to, at the appropriate time, make a recommendation of another amendment or motion. Okay, can I do that now, or should I wait?
Let's uh, I think we should go through this, approval of this amendment, and then we'll, we'll offer yours.
Okay.
So is there any more discussion on the amended version? I'll ask for your vote on this version. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an amended resolution. Is there any other amendments to this resolution or discussion? Commissioner Smith?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, one of the people that volunteered to be part of this committee is the President of Trinity Health Livingston. Uh, he's been the president for the last eight years. I'm wondering what what or why would we not want such an esteemed, educated, and experienced person on this committee? Why was he not put up for consideration?
Do we have any commissioners that would like to comment on that?
Hearing, hearing none, I would recommend that Dr. John O'Malley be included in the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas as a voting member for the term ending February thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Are you making a motion to amend the resolution to add this name?
I'm making a motion to add Dr. John O'Malley based on his qualifications to be a voting member of that committee.
Support, Gross.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to add? What's the gentleman's name?
Dr. John O'Malley.
Dr. John O'Malley to this resolution. That being said, we'll vote on the amended amended resolution. All those in favor of what?
We should scroll down. The amendment proposed.
Proposed amendment to add him to the. Right?
Yes.
All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Can we, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner, do you mind if we roll all this one?
Uh, sure.
Just so I have a clear, clear vote on that. Um, Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helzerman.
Uh, no.
Commissioner Domus.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Motion to amend fails.
Uh, so moving on with the amended resolution, is there any further comments or discussion on this? Commissioner Fiani.
I would like to propose another amendment. I move to amend the resolution to add at the very end the language, be it further resolved, that the Livingston County Board of Commissioners appoints Commissioner Wes Nakagiri as a non-voting member for a term commencing on May first, twenty twenty-four and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. Do I have a second?
Support.
It's been moved, it's been supported. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the resolution?
Hey, I would just.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify who's supported? Okay, Commissioner Domus, thank you.
Commissioner Helzerman.
Okay, we have uh, there's, we have an election coming up. Uh, and uh, I would suppose that this would be contingent upon uh, Wes being re-dominated or re- are you, are you reelected to the board? So uh.
Per the bylaws, it's a standing commissioner, that's a non-voting member of the, of the board. So if he was to not win reelection, he would automatically be dismissed from the board.
Okay, so my, okay, that's my.
Yep.
That's my question, that in that, in in that event, then there would not be a, we'd have to, if we wanted a board, a non-voting board member on, we would have to uh, then appoint another one.
I agree with Commissioner Helzerman. Do we have any further discussion on the amended resolution? Commissioner Domus.
Does Commissioner Nakagiri accept this appointment if he gives it?
Yes, I look forward to it. Thank you.
He looks forward to it, sir.
He looks forward to it. Glad to hear that.
Any uh, further discussion on this amended resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote on the amended resolution. All those in favor state by saying aye.
It's just the amendment.
Amendment.
Oh, we're on the amendment still? Yeah. Okay, on the amendment. So all those in favor of the new amendment, uh, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I have two in opposition, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Gross. Is that correct? Okay.
Amendment passes. So now we're moving on to the amended resolution. Do we have any further discussion on the amended resolution as it's been uh, given to the clerk? Commissioner Gross.
I would just like to uh, make a commentary regarding this resolution. Unfortunately, all of us missed the boat and did not avail ourselves the opportunity to conduct interviews with all the candidates. At one time, there was ten. Um, and uh, our chairman of the board decided on on five people. And uh, those five people were approved at the Personnel Committee with no discussion, no questions, no semblance of an interview to find out the views of those people with respect to the operations of the Health Department. And here again, um, you know, we're, we're being asked to vote on a group of people that have have not been interviewed, have not been questioned. You know, we, I for one would have liked to have known what their feelings were with respect to masking and mandates and vaccinations. Most of the things, quarantines, most of the things that we suffered through during the pandemic. And so I'm just making the comment that I feel badly personally because I missed the boat, and unfortunately, I think we all did, and uh, that bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comments or discussion for the, the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item twelve D, resolution two zero two four zero three zero two six. This is a resolution to increase the compensation to the members of Livingston County Road Commission. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move, Drick.
Moved by Drick, seconded by Domus. Uh, any discussions on?
Did we have the two members from the uh, Road Commission?
Absolutely.
Questioning, we didn't have that opportunity the last time they were here.
Uh, yes, please come up if you would, please.
Steve Wasilik is the manager of the Road Commission. And uh, how long have you been there, Steve? Two hundred years?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four.
And the gentleman sitting immediately to your left?
Uh, this is our newest commissioner, Paul Funk. He started, uh, he's been there just over a year as a commissioner.
Uh, thanks for coming in this evening. Um, we reviewed your resolution and and Personnel and uh, probably, you know, probably a little fault of my own. We didn't bring you up to get a full description of your scope of work. So if you want to give us a brief synopsis of what you guys get to go through on a monthly basis, it'd be great to hear.
Um, would you like to know just general road commission or commissioners' responsibilities or?
Yeah, what are the, what do you foresee the commissioners uh, in a, in a, in a month uh, go through before they prep for their, their meetings?
Yep. So the commissioners, they are, we have two board meetings a month.
Okay.
So they have the prep for those uh, wide range of subjects from road projects to policy settings to uh, union negotiations, that sort of thing. So it varies from meeting to meeting. Their general responsibility is overseeing the policy, overseeing the budget, directing staff as to how they want to use the money, um, which direction we want to go in, uh, you know, for the budget, uh, staffing decisions, uh, do we need more road workers? Do we need less road workers? Do, you know, we need more uh, personnel in general or less? They're involved heavily with the union negotiations um, in terms of benefits, pay, that type of thing. So that's pretty much an overview of of what their responsibilities are. It's a three-person board. And they're appointed to six-year terms uh, by you as. And they're appointed to six-year terms, uh, by you as, and they're up for, they're, they're staggered every two years. So we have overlap. So good continuity.
Okay. We have any, uh, questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Gross, please.
Yeah, call you Steve.
Sure.
Uh, I live in Green Oak Township. And, uh, it's my understanding that, um, the rebuild of, or reworking of US twenty-three from basically, uh, just south of Grand River all the way down to the county line to hook up with the part of US twenty-three that was done previously. It's gonna, a lot of that's going to happen this summer. And it's my understanding that Silver Lake road intersection with twenty-three will be closed, um, because of the construction of two roundabouts. And I've heard, and I don't know if this is factual or a rumor, perhaps you can help me with that, but I understand there's a bridge down at M thirty-six that's going to be taken out so that that way of getting into Green Oak Township from the west side of the expressway is also going to be gone. I'm wondering, does your organization have any input into the development of the plan for that activity in that area?
Yeah, we do. Um, that is an M dot job, but in part during the planned phase and the design, um, they have several meetings to which we do attend and give input, especially how they affect the, the county roads as part of the project, um, you know, what, how, how our roads tie in, how they're affected. So we do offer, uh, as much advice and, uh, review as we can. They don't always take our suggestions, but they do listen. Um, they do try to work with us as best that they can. So, um,
I'm just curious because it seems like, uh, the only way to get into Green Oak Township from the west side of the expressway is either at, uh, Lee Road or going down to Eight Mile, which I think is going to cause problems for quite a few residents.
Right. Are they, they, are you talking temporary closing of Nine Mile or because?
Well, I don't know how long it's going to take to take out the bridge.
Yeah, so they're phasing it. So right now, this year, the Silver Lake Road Interchange is the one they're working on. And they're hoping to have that done this summer. And then the Nine Mile intersection is next summer. So they're not going to be closing both Nine Mile and Silver Lake at the same time. So just like last year, Lee was closed quite a few times. So they got that worked pretty much all set there. So now they're moving down to Silver Lake. Once that bridge and that interchange is done, then they'll move down next year to, to Nine Mile. So you shouldn't have two out of the three crossings closed at once. Now, don't hold me to it. I don't have the exactly, something could arise where they might have to temporarily close them, but their goal is to only have one closed, uh, at a time.
Okay. Uh, thanks for that update. I, apparently what I heard regarding Nine Mile is rumor.
Oh.
Fake news.
Yeah, well, I think it's, yeah, it's going to be under construction. I don't, that's more planned till next, for next year. Yeah.
Does, does the Road Commission, uh, have any responsibility for the funding of that or is that strictly M dot?
That's strictly M dot. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. Uh, as far as the, the time it takes to be a commissioner, uh, I know that I was light in my estimate of the time it takes to be a county commissioner. So I'd like to hear maybe from Mr. Funk as an, you know, as a new one. As you're going to two, two meetings a month, or prep time for that, I assume, and then uh, other work, uh, maybe you have to go inspect roads. Can you give me a ballpark of maybe what you, time you put in for a week or month or some, some idea of the obligation that it is?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, gentlemen. What I found while I was being appointed was a number of things that I needed to read so that I could be somewhat running when I stepped in. Steve and his staff are fabulous. I had numerous meetings with them to get oriented. I also came in with a development background and prior public service and general knowledge of what road commissions are about. So I came in as I think the Personnel Committee members here would remember that I did well in my interview and I was appointed. What I also take great privilege in is working with all of you, but as well as all the constituents. That's an element that maybe Steve didn't mention, but we are, uh, constantly in conversation. What's going on? What's going on with this road? What's going on with this road? What can you do here? Why do you use limestone and not gravel? Why are you using a grater and not this? There's a lot of educational requirements to bring yourself up to speed. The budgeting, uh, this year, we just passed a three-year contract with the represented bargaining unit. Uh, a lot of work, probably, I don't know, forty hours of research on that. While we only meet as a formal commission, the three of us, Chairman, uh, Steve Crane and Kevin Spire and myself, we only meet formally, like you do, twice a month, but there's constant interaction and conversations. Um, we work with all sixteen townships, two cities and the villages. We're always on call and, um, another element that at least in my case, I get calls from other counties, other neighboring counties. I get calls from M dot. Um, we are the tenth largest county, as you know, in the state. We have three major state highways that run through us. While we're not day-to-day responsible for those, we have a lot of cars getting to those and getting off of those that we need to get our men and women and our families home safely. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not our grandfather's county anymore. We're right on the edge of the development and as we know, especially through the COVID time, there are more and more people going to want to be living out in the country because they can commute or they can telecommute or they can do their jobs online. And we're seeing pressure. You drive around, you see all the developments happening. Well, people that live there or want to work there or want to shop somewhere want to drive and get to work. I think that Steve and his team do an incredible job with the money we do get. Um, I think the data that was provided to you showed us, um, not in the middle of the state, we're not an average county. We have the growth happening here and the numbers are there. Now, why are we here tonight? We aren't here asking for a raise. Technically, we are, but that's not why we're here. By statute, your board is, has two primary purposes, maybe three. Every two years, you appoint or reappoint one of us. And the statute calls for you set, even though it comes out of our budget, you set the fair compensation levels. Well, that hadn't been done, gentlemen, in twenty years. And when we were preparing our budget, being the rookie, I asked the question, well, how do we figure out Steve's salary and the staff and so on? We went out, Steve did a great job and his team, they went out and they surveyed a whole bunch of counties from the high end, Wayne, Oakland, Kent, which we are not. And we don't expect to be compensated like that at all. But these counties started turning in, well, here's what a road manager gets. Here's what a, whatever gets. And they started putting in their commissioner data. So it prompted a naive, kind of a naive question. Well, how do we set that? Do we vote for ourselves? Steve did the research. It was determined, no, it has to come from you. And it hasn't been done in twenty years. I don't think any of you were here that long ago. Steve researched it back with some former people. Domas, Dave Domas might have been alive, but I don't know that he was here. Before Dirk was here. Yeah, yeah, okay. That's right. Remember, we went to high school together. So we're here, I can somewhat speak for the other two commissioners. A fair compensation is fine, but we wanted the opportunity to have you understand a little bit better about the scope and range of things we do. That certainly would enter any questions as well.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions or, uh, comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Smith? I would just point out that, uh, the county minister sent out a comparison chart uh, with our comparable counties that we generally use as a, as a, as a gauge or a reference. And, uh, the average, uh, and just the average of those comparables was slightly more than, uh, eight thousand. I think it's, one, it doesn't even come out of our, our budget. I had this, uh, conversation, uh, directly with Personnel Chair, uh, Sample and I don't want to say it, 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 it shouldn't matter, but I think it should represent an amount that is something that, that at least reimburses them for their effort, uh, at, at a minimum. So I would like to amend this resolution. Uh, since it's been twenty-two years now, that your, uh, compensation go from thirty-five hundred dollars per year to ten thousand dollars per year per commission.
We have, uh,
Is it a motion?
Is it a motion to amend them? So we have a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion from other commissioners?
I, did I hear you, you, you're saying twenty thousand?
Ten.
Okay. Ten thousand. Okay. From eight to ten.
From thirty-five hundred to ten.
Right.
They've not had an increase in their compensation in twenty-two years.
As to what was in the
Yeah. So in Personnel, it came to us, uh, and it was amended to sixty-five hundred. Commissioner Smith, uh, with second of Domas has brought this, uh, amendment to pose a question to the Board of Commissioners is ten thousand. A number which is acceptable to the board. So I'd ask, does anybody have any further discussions since you know what's on the table? Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when we discuss this in Personnel, um, the current compensation just for the Board of Commissioners, it's forty-five hundred currently, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And they have added the mileage reimbursement as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I thought you said thirty-five. I just want to make sure it's forty-five. And then we had agreed, um, to take that forty-five hundred, I think it was to sixty-five hundred in the Personnel meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so I was comfortable with that. Um, this is, you know, news to me that we want to take it up from forty-five hundred to ten, ten thousand? Yeah. And these are just for the commissioners, right?
That's for three commissioners, yes.
Three commissioners. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from commissioners?
He was fair to me.
Commissioner Helsman.
So, yeah, it seems, yeah, it seems fair to me and it's really, it comes out of their budget, right? It's not.
It is funded through the Road Commission budget.
So.
Commissioner Sample, can I just clarify with Commissioner Smith that you would like to change in the therefore be it resolved, the sixty-five hundred to ten thousand? That is your amendment, correct?
That is my proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Let me make one other point.
Go ahead.
In the current language and apparently years ago, the county mileage plan was added. That is not done. And as a simple suggestion, and I mentioned this at our last Commissioner meeting, I personally don't want to see Steve and his staff have to add that administrative to chase all that. So, so I would, I would be comfortable taking that off the table. So that's not there. And also I wanted to point out in that table, you may or may not have seen, there's counties that provide cars, life insurance, health insurance. We're not talking about any of that stuff. So that's kind of something else for food for thought. I mean, it's a simple number. Whatever you gentlemen determine it to be tonight is fine, but there's no other hidden things to it.
Thank you. Uh, any other commissioners?
Just Mr. Domas. I'm sorry.
I'll yield to Commissioner Domas.
Uh, Steve, your, your predecessor, Mike Crane, used to tell us that, he told me, I assume he told everybody, he was that kind of guy. That if you took all of the roads in the county that were the responsibility of the Road Commission, laid them end to end, you could drive to Dallas. How much road do you really have?
Uh, we have, it's about one thousand three hundred thirty-four miles.
And how many bridges do you?
We have ninety-two bridges.
And are you working on those this year?
We are working on two as we speak right now. Yep.
Yeah. Well, uh, it's not uncommon for me to see, uh, your predecessor out in, uh, on the road with his car. You guys don't get company cars either, do you? And, um, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with, with the raise that's been suggested and I think you certainly deserve it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Fiani.
I was just wondering, Mr. Funk, Commissioner Funk, um, what you propose as the annual compensation?
Personally?
Yes, please.
We don't have to be the biggest county, but we shouldn't be down there an average of the lowest either. So whatever you gentlemen, I'm all for trying to be fiscal, as you know. We manage about sixteen-plus million dollars of different kinds of grants and whatnot.
What was that, what was that number? How much?
Sixty million. I mean, I mean, there's, I hate to say it's plenty of money because we still pretty tight with what we get. But to increment, to increment three commissioners' salary, four, five, six thousand dollars is round, rounding error in terms of the math of the money. So hard number, I don't have one. But I mean, I, if you go in the eight, ten range, that's, nobody's going to argue with that. We're, we're not, we're, like I said, uh, Commissioner Fiani, that's not really why we're here. We just, since you're, since you need to deal with this, and I would suggest maybe every two years when you're, when you're appointing or reappointing, that's when you take a peek at it. Make it, make it simple for you and your staff.
I
But we don't want to come back, you know, we don't want to come back at the end of the year and say, oh, it's time for a raise. We're, we're not like that.
And, uh, you know, when we presented this, um, I know Commissioner Sample, myself, a couple of other commissioners did some financial evaluations, you know, CPI, um, annual cola increases, um, it was our understanding, and perhaps that was a, a, a lack of, uh, more diligent communication between the two of us, but it was our understanding that more so the road commissioners just wanted a, um, say symbolic gesture that their work is appreciated and it was due time for a raise. So uh, I personally at the time thought, based upon the calculations, um, what the desire of the commissioners were, that the sixty-five hundred, six, six thousand five hundred dollar amount was, was, was fair, was, um, acceptable. Um, I'm comfortable with that. Uh, I'm, I'm not comfortable, uh, going above that, especially when doing an analysis of other comparable counties. Um, your work is greatly appreciated. Uh, I'm more than happy, you know, as, as one commissioner to continue to have these discussions annually about your commissioners' compensation. So you don't have to wait another twenty-two years, but
I'd like to be here.
But for the next, uh, fiscal year, um, I'm, I'm more comfortable with the sixty-five, six thousand five hundred dollar amount.
Based on the data that we had provided, I, I think maybe you, through, uh, Mr. Bird's office, got some additional data. The number you're proposing would still make us the lowest of all counties.
That, that is recognized. Um, I will say that
And we, and we have the growth.
With all due respect, uh, yourself, um, you know, you, you came onto the board, um, I don't believe you even expected a compensation for it. So, because, you know, being the public servant that you are, you did it.
Talk to my wife.
You did it for the betterment of the county, right?
Well, cer- certainly. Public service is a long tradition in my family and I'm honored to be one of your community friends. I will tell you though, back to, uh, Commissioner Smith's question, it's a lot more time than I thought it was going to be. But again, I'm not, you know, please take it. I'm not here to haggle.
Oh, of course not.
Something you think is fair.
So from our evaluation, going from the forty-five, so you've been on the board a little more than a year now, is that correct or?
I started January first of last year.
So a year and a half. So from our, I should say from my perspective, you're going from forty-five hundred dollars to sixty-five hundred dollars, which is a, a forty-four percent increase in itself. So although your predecessors served twenty-two years ago, I mean, you came on board, you were at four thousand five hundred, and within one year, you're going to six thousand five hundred.
Well, this isn't a, a union negotiation, but it's a recognition of what the value is and to our two hundred thousand citizens, we heard some already tonight here and on the Zoom, they want good roads, probably, public, some element of public transportation, roads. I also have the privilege, as you know, sitting on the Planning Commission. We are working on the twenty-twenty-five New Master Plan, all of this. I also have the privilege, as you know, sitting on the planning commission. We are working on the twenty twenty five new master plan. All of this stuff is to be integrated. Well, I'll repeat my tagline before, this is not our grandfather's county anymore. So again, you could replace me tomorrow, you're still going to need to find men and women that have comparable backgrounds that are willing to spend this time in lieu of employment somewhere else. That's awesome.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Gross.
I, in listening to the questions and conversation, minor debate, if you will, I, I can appreciate that some amount of research was put into developing the proposed rate of sixty five hundred. And I understand my colleague, Commissioner Smith's thought about going to ten thousand. And I believe it was mentioned earlier that average of all of our comparable counties was touch over eight thousand. So I, I personally would be in favor of going to eight thousand. It's a compromise. And I just throw that out at this point because we do have a motion on the floor already.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Helsman?
Oh, yeah. This is my second comment. If somebody else wants to make a. So when we're thinking about this, I think, what's the commission, what, what do we get? What's our, you know, first of all, we get health insurance and we get sixteen thousand. So I would suppose that that they work at least half as hard as we do. You know? You know, I, in, in, you know, that, that's how I look at it, you know?
Thank you.
You know, how, how do you come up with these figures? You know, they're, they're, they're always compared to something. So, you know, like I said, ten thousand seems seems good to me, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, did you still have something or? No, I just, I just find it humorous. So we make, it occurred to me as you were talking, Commissioner Helsman, that you're right. I think we make sixteen and we also have a sixty million, sixty million out if I did so.
Any further questions or comments from the commissioners?
Just one kind of closing thought here. You know, these guys work, if the job calls for you to be out on the job site at night, that's where you go. And if it's raining, that's too bad. It's not like a job that's indoors and heated. And it doesn't mean that every time you go to work, it's wet and cold. But I know because I'm watching a bunch of your people in my district replace a bridge. And there's, there's no walking off the job when something has to be done. It's not an easy job. We don't have any tools except these pencils and the paper we write with, write on. And, and in my other life, my early life, when I, as a student, got a part-time job working in construction, I thought, well, I never want to do this for the rest of my life. So it's not an easy job and, and it's difficult to find comparables when you're looking at this. I don't know how many roads there are in those comparable counties that we were talking about, or what the condition of those roads are, or how much traffic they get. But this is a growing community and it continues to get bigger. And so this is not the same as my grandfather's roads. And I want to thank you guys for the great job you do, no matter how this comes out here this evening. I appreciate you and so does everybody in my district. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Dirk, Chairman Dirk, sorry.
I'm not opposed to sixty five hundred. I'm not opposed to eight thousand. Not opposed to nine thousand. Not opposed to ten thousand. That's less than a thousand bucks a month. It lasts than a thousand bucks a month. If you guys tell us your budget can stand that, all of thirty K, I don't see a problem with that. I don't see a problem with sixty five or any of those numbers. Just let's get a vote and get it done.
I hope somebody recorded that because we'll never hear this again from Commissioner Druck.
So I'd like to offer one more, one more thing. If any other commissioners have something after that, that's fine, too. I think, you know, we look at the numbers and the numbers say one thing, right? And we look at the other departments and their ass throughout time. Unfortunately, none of us are responsible that this hasn't seen the board in twenty two years. So we're looking at an increase right now at sixty five hundred of forty four percent. If you take, I did some figures and so did Nick, and they're within three hundred dollars of one of another. And I realize we're still on the lower end of the county and that's understandable, but you know, to keep in mind the asset we'll get from other departments, it's hard, it, it's hard to say increase this thing to ten thousand dollars because of the size of the percentage it is over the short period of time. I'm not, not in favor of all the above, but I'd like to say that everybody here has really thought long and hard about how that percentage of increase would look at the end of a vote. So that being said, that's what I have to offer on that one. I ask any other commissioners if they have any further questions on the proposed amendment to ten thousand dollars at the table. Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote.
So, so I'll request a roll call vote, please.
Okay, so we're going to have a roll call vote and it's on the amendment to the resolution at ten thousand dollars. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
Commissioner Druck?
Yes.
And Commissioner Deaton?
No.
We have five yes, four no. Motion to amend carries.
Excellent. So you have amended version of this resolution, which brings the salary up to ten thousand dollars. Do we have any more deliberation on this? Seeing none, I'll ask for those in favor, state by.
Chairman, I'll request another roll call vote, please.
Okay. So could we get another roll call vote on the amended resolution?
Commissioner Druck?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani?
No.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
No.
And Commissioner Nakagiri?
No.
We again have five yes, four no. Amended motion carries.
So we have an amended resolution. Once again, that's capping the salary at ten thousand. Do we have any?
That, that was a vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay, resolution has been, thanks for clearing that up for me.
You're welcome. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keep up the great work, gentlemen.
All right. On to another topic here. We're on twelve E, which is two zero two four dash zero three dash zero two seven. It's a resolution to submit an estimate of the twenty twenty five general fund budget to the tax allocation board. It comes to us from Fiscal Services. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Fiani.
It's been moved and supported, it, supported. Do we have Nathan Bird here to present this? Do you have any comment on this, Nathan?
Not really, only that. Do this annually. We need to get this done before tax allocation meets, which is next month. This budget that you see is not binding. It says it right there on the form. It's just a general estimate. We're usually fairly close, but we have to do this every year so the tax allocation board can run with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Do we have any questions for the administrator? Seeing none, we'll move on to a voice, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Druck?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item twelve F, it is resolution two zero two four zero three zero two eight. It's a resolution authorizing the application submission to the U.S. Department of Energy, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Voucher Program from, for replacement HVAC equipment from facility services. Can I get a motion?
Don't move, Helserman.
Support Deaton.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to letter G. It's two zero two four zero three zero two nine. It's a resolution authorizing specialty courts and programs to apply for the substance abuse and mental health services administration grant for fiscal year twenty twenty five through fiscal year twenty thirty. Comes from Court Central Services. Could I get a motion?
So moved, Druck.
Support, Helserman.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, discussion on the resolution? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Ms. Applegate, I have a question on the, the specialty courts, the substance abuse, mental health services. My question is, would that be considered an extra function of the courts, a core function of the courts? I mean, what, what would happen if we decided to not do this anymore?
Especially courts in general, or do you mean this particular?
This particular one.
So we would be able to hopefully sustain funding. Right now, we receive the scale funding through the state. That's a pretty consistent funding. It's just a smaller amount. So this is additional funding to pay for treatment services, be able to provide our participants for the adult drug court.
Okay, so you're saying this is something we statutorily must do, or it is?
This particular grant.
Well, the, just, I say the program, the substance abuse and mental health, you know, the specialty courts. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any more questions from commissioners? Commissioner Helserman?
Just a question. The reason for these specialty courts is, is to stop recidivism, is that correct? And to give an alternate punishment, if that's the correct word, instead of jail time or prison time. So, and what is the? Okay, so we're spending money for this and I assume that we do studies to say, what if we didn't have the specialty court? What? How much more would we have to pay in jail fees, or how much more would we have to pay for them coming three or four times again before the court? Are there any studies to that effect?
Yeah, so it does reduce the recidivism so greatly and saves the county large amounts of money. But what it does is, I mean, you said it properly, that it provides alternative treatment for people with substance use disorders, the adult drug court in itself. And so we're able to provide them with treatment and case management services so that they don't keep coming back into the system.
Okay, so then they may not be, they would be over their addiction or have victory over their addiction, however you want to play it.
Correct.
So.
They become productive citizens and we don't see them in the criminal justice system.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from commissioners? Commissioner Gross?
Ms. Applegate. Have we seen any factual data that shows the effectiveness of this program or, or the lack thereof? And there's statistics to support that this is something we really, really need to do.
There are. So actually, the state court, it's court administrative office, and I don't have it on you right now, did a study and we have one of the best recidivism rates as far as people continuing to come into the system in the state, actually in Livingston County. So the scale does do studies. So they looked back three years to see versus the general population, how many, you know, recidivism there was. And we had an excellent statistic.
Any further questions? Commissioner Smith?
Ms. Applegate, maybe you can confirm something for me. I had, I had heard from a couple of sources that our drug court is so successful that, in fact, there's, I'll call it a backup, there's a backlog. And, and it's the preference of the courts that when possible, especially younger offenders, to move them into this program and would this, would this funding help in some way clear that backlog or at least get a little closer to caught up or?
Yes, that's true. And we do have a backlog. We did have to limit the number of referrals that we have because we were receiving so many referrals. And we want to make sure that we could provide them with all the treatment services and case management services for the participants. And so, yes, this would allow us to actually accept more participants and also to provide more treatment services. So this, this particular grant would help a lot to be able to provide these services to more citizens.
Commissioner Deaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Applegate, good to see you again. My mentor in the courts, does this cover veterans' court as well?
This does not. So this particular one is just for our adult drug court.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from commissioners? Commissioner Gross?
I wouldn't allow somebody else to have a question because I already had one, but.
I think it's been pretty, pretty reasonable to let you go twice this time.
Ms. Applegate. Is it possible to supplement? If we get this grant, would it be possible to supplement it with some of the funding that we're going to receive from the opioid settlement?
So it would not. So one of the things, it's my understanding, and not that I'm an expert at all in the opioid settlement, but I do believe that it does only provide treatment services for people with opioid use disorders. So that's actually a small number of our participants. Many of our participants have alcohol use disorders. So we would not be able to pay for the treatment of those particular participants. We're probably about eighty to ninety percent on people with alcohol use disorders.
Thank you. Any further questions from Commissioner, Commissioner Fiani?
This is just for my better understanding. It's, I'm under the impression that, for example, this, this specialty court, the veterans' court, those are, they're not mandated by the state. They're, is that, is that a correct understanding? Okay. Okay, so I take it that not every county then offers those opportunities?
Yeah, not every.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to letter H, which is two zero two four zero three zero three zero. This is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Power Pro two Cots, power loaders and Stryker Pro Care Services, a Stryker Pro Care Service Agreement. Comes from Emergency Medical Services EMS and can I get a motion?
Move the question.
Support. It's been moved and supported. We have Director Felpoche, maybe not, so, Houston, oh, sorry. Thanks for stepping in. Okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Chapman, committee director.
How you doing? Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, do we have any questions from the commissioners on, on the resolution? Commissioner Nakagiri?
The, this is more looking into the future. You know, we had, you know, a number, I guess I don't know the number that we got from a grant, you know, these power, power lift Cots. We're purchasing two more that, you know, it was nice to get the free ones up front. Have you looked at the budget to get a feel for our ability to buy replacements when they wear out? Has that been looked at?
Yeah, that's included in the cost moving forward, but I know that we can use, reuse these as we remount them. I don't know the exact, how many times we can reuse them. We tried to remount at least twice, so I think we can actually use them for two remounts at that time.
When you say remount, that's on another ambulance?
Yeah, so hopefully ten years, seven to ten years that we could keep pace.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Domas?
When the director was here at committee, we talked a little bit about this application and When the director was here at committee, we talked a little bit about this application and I had a question on the insurance as far as repair and maintenance. And it's kind of a unique policy that they offered to refresh and reuse or whatever that expression was.
I believe seven years.
So that they're, they're never out of service. And, and that worked right around the question that I had asked him about warranties. In my other life, we bought equipment that had a twelve-month warranty from, from errors and workmanship and material. And, but we were covered with that, with this policy, so. And he sent me the information on it. When you see him, tell him I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Anything you'd like to add before we go to a roll? Okay, sounds good. Seeing no more comments or questions, I'll ask for a voice vote. I'm sorry, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nock Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, it's two zero two four zero three zero three one. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trinity Health Livingston Hospital to provide EMS services. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Fiani.
Support Deaton. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll ask for another roll call vote.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nock Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Drake.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to twelve J, it's two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three two. It's a resolution to accept the twenty twenty four grant funding from the Department of Licensing of Regulatory Affairs Cannabis Regulatory Agency. It's brought to us by the Health Department. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Helserman.
Or Smith. It's been moved and supported. I'd like to ask Mr. Bowling to come up and present this resolution. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners.
Is this, well, I'll let you kind of give us a brief rundown of this.
Yeah, sure. This is probably our fifth year in a row with this funding source. This comes directly from medical marijuana licenses that are issued to the state. That's strictly where the money comes from. I think there's some misconception about what this money is for. It's really to, you know, present the dangers of use of these drugs and the safe storage of them to keep out the hands of children and that sort of thing, so. Our relationship with Washington County has done so as sort of economy of scale. They've got some expertise to put speaker panels together that are experts in the country, you know, to provide educational opportunities. We've partnered with them. This is probably the third year we've done that, so. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do I have any questions or comments from commissioners?
This is, I.
Christian Helserman.
This is dealing with the first time that they legalized marijuana in medical form.
Yes.
This is all related to the medical.
This is not recreational marijuana use. This is medical marijuana.
Okay, so.
That's where the money comes from.
So do we find that since it's been legalized recreationally, that there are less people getting these medical cards?
We're seeing the funding on this grant source increase a little bit each year, so I would say no.
Okay. Okay, so.
It's not increasing by much, maybe like one thousand dollars a year or something, but.
Okay, so it's steady, it's steady to slowly growing.
Yes.
Okay, okay, and would you say that your education is basically, but there's medical, is it basically just with medical usage? That this is talking about, or is it talking about marijuana use in general?
So we probably go a little more general with it, specifically the fundings for medical marijuana, but we treat marijuana the same as far as, you know, the safe storage of it, you know, the improper use of it, the health effects of it, you know, all of it is, is very similar, so we, we treat that, we broaden our scope a little bit to address all of that. You guys may have seen billboards that were on the freeways last couple of years where we talk about those sorts of hazards, so we continue to do the same thing.
So how to keep it out of reach of children and things of that nature?
If you use it, don't drive and all those sorts of things, so.
And overuse?
Yeah, the chronic use of it and the health conditions, all that, yes.
Okay, so, do you have classes per se, or do you just, do you have literature? Do you?
It's.
How, how do you get the information out?
It's primarily pamphlets, social media, the billboards I mentioned, the speaker series that we partnered with Washington. That's how we get the messaging out. So we don't hold classes at the Health Department about this. We honestly don't have a lot of the expertise. It's just,
Okay.
You know, this is something that we do partner with other agencies on to present the materials, so.
So you would not characterize the Health Department as pushing people to do marijuana?
We're the Health Department.
Thank you.
No.
Okay, I, I, I wanted to ask an obvious question, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions? Commissioner Nock Gary.
So the, the, you mentioned it comes from licensing. Is it individuals that have to purchase the licenses? How, how many in, would you estimate in Livingston County?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, Commissioner. I don't have that answer. I mean, it's in the thousands. I, I don't, I can get that number for you if you like it. It's easy.
Sure, I'm just curious because you mentioned it, that's used to fund the, you know, the grants, like. Question about.
This grant's over fifty thousand dollars and I don't know the cost of each license, but a percentage of that comes back to this fund, so. It's an easy calculation to do, so I can get you that number.
Yeah, that, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Fiani.
So I see that the grant is, as, as you mentioned as well, roughly fifty-five thousand dollars. And if I heard correctly, the plan is to continue to set up a website, to continue billboard advertisement. And it looked like, I think you mentioned seminars and like a video webinar. Is, I guess is that a correct understanding of how the funds would be?
Yeah, so it's generally the same programming we had last year, just updating the information.
Is there, my first question, or my second question then is, if, if you didn't receive the funding, what would be the next course of action? Obviously, you wouldn't have a website, but are you planning to supplement with other funds?
We don't have any other funding at the Health Department to provide substance use sorts of programming, so no, this would be a, and I'd have to find funding for staff members that rely on this for their jobs.
My next question is, well, I guess actually that, that, that's interesting, so. You, you're able to utilize this funding for, for actual personnel costs then?
Yeah, the budget's included in the agenda packet. You can, most of that is personnel costs.
Okay, I'm a little thrown off only because I thought I was actually going to like pay for the implementation of a website or pay for like a physical billboard.
People need to do that. So my staff has to put all that information together, so that takes time and they're not free. So, so it's a blend of both of those things. So yes, this is paying for personnel costs and it's paying for things.
Okay, because I'm more comfortable if it's paying a person who's going to facilitate or assist with helping people avoid negative paths with marijuana.
Sure.
In general, I'm not really excited about paying a lease rate on a billboard or the lease rate for a website or along those lines. And I'm really not excited about being in partnership with Washington County. That's, I guess, where I stand on this. I, I welcome, you know, a rebuttal to that. If you have any thoughts, I, am I misunderstanding something?
Well, I'll just say we have a terrific relationship with Washington County. We share a medical director with them. We don't share the same politics and I can all agree with that, but the expertise and the strength of the staff that they have in their department complements what we, we really don't have here in Livingston County. We're not a big department comparatively to what Washington County can do. They have in-house expertise that can create a lot of this program material that we can't. We review everything in detail before it ever gets out in our community. Trust me, we're not sending out messaging that wouldn't be appropriate, but I value our relationship with Washington County quite a bit.
Is there, would you be amicable to if perhaps some type of language was amended to the resolution that said that this funding would go towards personnel to keep somebody employed, for example, as opposed to going towards, again, I go back to a rough example of like paying the lease on a billboard or paying for a website.
All the budgets and, I mean, I don't want to go through the budget line by line during a commissioner meeting, but that detail is there for you to review. It is primarily staff time.
It's about twenty thousand in speakers and.
Right.
And advertisements.
So that's, that's where I, I mean, to be blunt, that's where I don't want the money going. I'd rather see it be utilized basically to help supplement the current personnel in the Health Department, which was my.
So to Commissioner Sample's remark, I mean, that's thirty thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars going back to staff. I don't have that page in front of me right now, but. So it is primarily paying per staff time, but we also have to produce some output, you know, to meet the, you know, the reporting requirements of the grant. We have to show some effectiveness that we are, have outreach materials and we don't just have staff that go out, are just talking, so. This is how we put our budget together. It's been our work plan for years. It's been effective and I would encourage the commissioners to support what's been submitted. There it is. Thanks, Nathan.
Smith, sorry. I, I just wanted to point out that in twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, City of Brighton had a referendum for recreational marijuana. And I was part of a, what I'll call a grassroots group to keep it out of the City of Brighton. One of my first phone calls was to the Health Department to get everything from historical information, statistical information, impact on, on youth, impact on adults, and then what kind of current information did they have? What, what kind of literature did they use? And I got to tell you, it was, it was extremely helpful and, and really appreciate the director's help in, in helping assemble that because we used it to build our own little website to, you know, we were at the Stop Marijuana in Brighton campaign. And it was very, it was very effective and I was, I was very glad it was at the tip of his fingers because we could react quickly. City Howell may be facing the same issue here this, this coming year. There's, there's a movement afoot, so. We, we, on the Brighton Committee have offered to help as we can and so. That alone makes me very, and we were able to defeat the referendum. And I, I think it was incredibly helpful to have that educational information out there for people to see and, and so I, I support this.
Mr. Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before this resolution go, went to committee, I spoke to Director Bowling in length about it and echoed all these questions that everybody's brought up in here except for the one with Mr. Fiani just brought up about going to a person and had a lot of concerns about it as well. And, you know, as we went through it, this is a, this grant is a portion of the money that's collected for the medical licenses. We were applying for a portion of that to advertise and market for people not to do it. And, you know, and our, you know, I enquired about what we're doing in Washington. I'm not a big fan of what they do down there either. But they do get more of the money because that is their thing down there. And so we're going to be able to use and leverage some of that to help keep people off this is my hope. So I'm not a big supporter of cannabis, but, you know, it's in our face. It's everywhere, so. You know, I do like what the director is doing and I know a lot of my constituents in our voting area are definitely against this, but I think we just need to look at this as, that money is there. We apply for it, we can use it for good and that is to try and keep people off it. So that's my thoughts on this.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Drake, Chairman Drake.
Director, there's page seventy-two of the implementation, implementation plan that talks about two different dates. One is March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the other's again, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The first one was to identify three priority topics for messaging. As that date seems to have come along, come and gone, do you have those three topics that are going to be priority for messaging? Or is it the same as long as it was last year and you're going to?
I mean, it's going to be very similar to last year. We were kind of waiting on board approval before we moved too far forward with everything, but I can certainly get you that information.
Tell me what, is it going to be, don't use medical marijuana? That's what it kind of sounds like.
Well, no, people have medical marijuana cards.
That's what I'm saying. If they have a medical marijuana card.
We, we don't see, it's all the, the safe storage of it, keeping out the hands of children. You know, the, the chronic risks of, of overuse. Those are the sorts of main messaging that we've done from year to year.
So even with card, be careful, that kind of stuff.
Right, and we don't really get that specific in our messaging to differentiate between medical marijuana cardholders and recreational users. It's, it's just here are the risks, here are the dangers, etc.
Okay, and the other date was March fifteenth to confirm a date with the City of Howell for a resource fair. Where you're going to invite the speakers and have food and giveaways and other things.
Right, and we've not confirmed that yet either. Well, no, we were, we didn't have this information in place in time, you know, to come to the February meeting for the Board of Commissioners, so we'll, we'll be doing that very soon.
No date yet.
No date yet.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to let the director know. I Googled around, so the, the fee is forty dollars. It's good for two years, so. Doing some math, you know, it's about twenty-six hundred people.
Thank you. One less thing on my agenda list. I'll cross off my note. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Drake. Go ahead, Doug. Go ahead.
This money is from marijuana, but it's not for marijuana. Is that a?
Sounds sort of philosophical.
That's, yeah, right, but that's, in, in general, we are not advocating the misuse. You know, it's, it's like any, if marijuana was like any other drug, prescribed by a doctor would be dosed appropriately. And, you know, this is, there is a, there is a dosage that is appropriate at the right time for the right people. But there's always, you know, whenever you take a painkiller of any source, you're, you are in danger of becoming addicted to it. It's the same, it's the same sort of thing here. And so I, I favor, I favor this because I, I think that that we are doing what we can to keep it limited as much as possible or so it's correctly used. You know, if there is such a thing as, you know, some people would argue there's such a thing as a correct use of marijuana.
Mr. Drake, you still have a question?
Yes, thank you. A quick one. Take me through the measuring of the outcome. How do you measure the outcome of telling people that's harm, possibly harmful even with a card or the safe locking up because there's lock bags? How do you measure that stuff?
Yeah, as far as measuring, you know, are we preventing the use or misuse of it? I, you know, that's a real hard number to come by. A lot of it's counting, you know. How many reaches do we get to our messaging? There's ways to do that through the social media or through printed materials, through people driving on the freeway, looking at a billboard, through people registering for the speaker series. So it's more of counting contacts than it is actually getting at. You know, that's a really harder thing to measure is, you know, are less people using marijuana because of our messaging? So ideally, you'd love to get that.
You're kind of telling me that you'll count the number of pitches, the guy, the pitcher will throw, but you're not sure if they're strikes or balls.
No, I understand your analogy. It's really, it's really hard.
It's just hard to do, right?
You know, our assumption is the messaging is effective to the people that are receptive to hear it and.
Okay.
You know.
Is this, should this go on for the next ten years?
I'm not sure of the sunset date on this. I, you know, I'm surprised we're still receiving funding for it. You know, with the recreational marijuana passing, I, I'm still surprised that this, this funding is available, but it is, and I think we can do good with it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Domas.
Thank you. This is way out of my lane, you know, in my, when I was your age, nobody even knew there was things like marijuana. Well, they did know, but they didn't know much, I guess. It seems to me that wherever, I may be wrong. I've been wrong before, but it seems to me that. It seems to me that wherever it I may be wrong. I've been wrong before, but it seems to me that that uh when you open the door a little crack, that it always winds up getting wide open later sooner around. And and when I was in the service in Colorado, they wouldn't even sell cigarettes at gas stations because we had too much fresh air. We're in this in the ski areas. You couldn't buy cigarettes, and that was fine with me. And uh and I was at a wedding in 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 Denver just a year ago, and there were people sleeping under bridges, whole different community. And uh this board, well, not this board, but previous boards sought to uh to take a position on the use of marijuana and other opiate products. And and I left a copy of uh the information with our administrator. The people that were that were promoting this program about curing these uh people in that at the addicts uh were were well intentioned. And they started off believing that that everything that they did was going to be for the best. Well, it rarely works out that way. I saw a story just the other day about a product called CBD gummies. Familiar with them? CBD, everybody?
Most.
Wait, he backed there then.
It exists.
And this man in uniform that says, oh, we know about those. And uh yeah, I thought and they were they were they were pitching people with uh dementia. And they said, you know, get dementia, these will take care of you. And they had some big names that had tried this stuff and they were better. Their testimony was that they were virtually cured. Find out that it's a product that in that contains marijuana. And I don't know how. It's not my line. I don't, you know, but it's creeping into that too, and it's being sold as as a cure for probably one of the ugliest diseases known to man and for dementia. So I don't know, whatever we do with this, I just it there isn't enough care available to make sure that we get it right, you know. So I would steer getting it as less wrong as possible. That would be my thought, you know. All right, that's for whatever.
Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the twenty five thousand dollars under for advertising supplies and printing, um don't ever want to assume. I'm up, but I'm going to assume we're going to have a reputable company that has statistics and knows how to do this type of advertising to get results.
Of course.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions from commissioners?
It seems. I have one if I could. Sarah Applegate made an interesting comment that most of the problems that they ha- have with recidivism in their jail is with alcohol. So I'll say.
Commissioner Nackery.
I would motion to call the question unless we agree to um allow a vote to happen. I'll motion to call the question.
Second. Yeah, we got a roll call vote on the call the question. Yep. Okay, so roll call that vote on that.
I'm calling the question on twenty four oh three oh thirty two. So Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, now we'll ask for roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item K two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three three. This is a resolution to accept grant funding from Michigan Associations for Local Public Health to support local health department staff well-being. Uh this comes from our health department. Got to get a motion.
So move, Dirk.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any question or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll ask for another roll call vote.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to uh item L. It is uh two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three four. It's a resolution authorizing a contract renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield for discounted medical billing in twenty twenty four for the jail. Can I get a motion?
Dirk.
It's been moved, supported by Commissioner Domas. And um tonight we have Under Sheriff Plus with us.
Evening, commissioners. I'm here to answer any questions that uh you have about this resolution regarding the Blue Cross Blue Shield contract. Uh as you can see by the information provided, this saves the sheriff's office about a million dollars a year. And uh we were asking for a renewal, which would lead us into twenty six. It's a two-year renewal. Um it makes perfect sense to uh continue on with this relationship we have with Blue Cross because it saves us a ton of money.
Do we have any uh questions or comments on the resolution from resolution from commissioners? Uh seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, who?
Yeah, Chair, I just want to um make sure there was no diminished services at all by doing this.
No, it's an excellent relationship, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. A little quicker next time. Commissioner Domas.
Changes at all, any of them? Services.
No changes in service. Like I said, it's been an excellent relationship we've had with Blue Cross and they do. This is for off-site medical billing, so if an inmate goes to a hospital, uh dental is covered also. Like I said, having the Blue Cross contract gives us discounted services for the inmates on off-site.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Uh okay, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
And Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
On to uh twelve M two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three five. It's a resolution authorizing the reclassification of jail intake specialist to jail division deputy's position. Comes to us from our sheriff. Can I get a motion? Move. It's been moved and supported. Is there any questions or comments? Commissioner Nakigiri.
I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution, tack on as a last um uh be it resolved uh an amendment. I I passed out a hard copy, but I'll state it here for the record. Be it further resolved that the annual funding for this position will be supplemented by an annual transfer from the commissary fund to the general fund. That is what we're doing right now. Um the initial amount of this transfer will be thirty eight thousand dollars. Transfers in subsequent years will be increased to account for inflation at a rate equal to COLA increases. Further, this position is contingent upon the continuing annual transfer from the commissary fund to the general fund.
Support. The motions are the uh resolution's been amended and supported. Uh is there any questions or comments from commissioners? Uh we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have an amended resolution. Uh it's open for discussion. Any question or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to twelve N, it's two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three six. It's a resolution approving the performance requirements of the Michigan Department of Transportation from transportation form number two two zero seven B, and it comes to us again from the sheriff. Can I get a motion?
So move, Dirk.
I get a second.
For Deaton.
It's been moved and supported. It's open for discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask for voice voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh twelve oh two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three seven. It's a resolution authorizing the sheriff's office and the county of Livingston to apply for the fiscal year twenty twenty five State of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning Project Proposal Grant, and this comes to us again from our sheriff. Can I get a motion, please?
So move, Gross.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any questions or comments from commissioners? Since this last one, Under Sheriff Plus, do you have anything to add to this for us?
No, again, just another ask of O H S P for twenty twenty five for some projects. Uh as you can see, as stated in the resolution, a driving simulator will be asking for some license barcode readers for the patrol cars and uh portable crash scene lighting. So again, we're hopeful that we're successful. Thank you very much. Question of Commissioner Dirk.
Might you estimate if we're going to need a service contract or a maintenance contract? Might you estimate if there's consumables that you have to worry about in the future? Or are these things just they work because they work and they plug in?
I I think that's where we're at, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
Because they work.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments? Uh seeing none, we'll move on to a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh we are on to twelve P. It's uh two zero two four dash zero three dash zero three eight. Resolution supporting House Bill five three nine two and House Bill five five three four to enable the continuation of current trial court funding while increasing transparency of the court spending. This is brought to us from the Board of Commissioners. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion by Dirk.
Support Deaton. It's been moved and supported. It's open for discussion. Do we have any comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yeah, I just um uh want to highlight it um what I thought was the most important thing. One, it's, you know, a significant amount of uh funding that we would have to, the county commission would have to provide if they don't uh pass these bills. Uh but what also caught my attention, this was bipartisan bill, you you know, so it's you've got uh one sponsored by a Republican, one a Democrat. And uh near and dear to my heart, you know, uh it enforces data collection to be completed that by the state court administrative office, which I is really important in my view, you know, there we've um uh are already lawsuit with the courts right now, and in large part, I think that if we had the data that um on workloads and caseloads and um that we wouldn't be where we're at today. So I um I just wanted to point those things out. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Uh thank you very much. Any other commissioners with comments or questions on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes uh today's resolutions for consideration. Good work. Uh we are on item number thirteen, which is accounts payables. We have two, an A and a B. Can I get a motion to approve them both?
So move, Gross. Support Deaton.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye. We are on to item number four, which is our last call to the public. It's a two-minute call to the public where you can address the board with your concerns or your comments. Do we have any cards in the room?
I do have two cards. Tammy Higgins from Iosco.
Tammy Higgins. Hi. We'll have two minutes.
So much that was covered tonight. Um one thing I just wanted to say, and I I understand Mr. Dirk was asking the health commissioner or Matt Bowling about, well, what's your measurables? And I like to say prevention and education and just good infrastructure, like just with anything with it being educating on drugs of all sorts, alcohol, marijuana, opioids. Same thing with good road infrastructure that's there to protect bicyclists and pedestrians who cannot drive and have to find their way just walking for bus service. You don't, those tragedies are prevent are prevented. You never see, those never make the news. So your measurable is when you don't have people injured and killed on our roads, when you have good, safe road infrastructure and you have less and less people addicted to any kind of drug, whatever. So that's your measurable. No news is good news. Um and with that, I have, unfortunately, Mr. Fiani, it is from Ann Arbor, um their downtown development authority. They did a um a bike lane at uh Division and First and William Street Bike Way corridors. And they had measurables from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen of like how many people got injured and hurt at that area. And after they did put in bike lanes and bike paths and safe infrastructure, their overall crashes resulting in injury decreased to forty four percent. It was forty two percent for pedestrians, such as walkers, and forty two percent for bicyclists. And then they have had zero fatal and serious injury crashes have been reduced to zero. So you don't hear about the good news. You only hear about the person who got killed on the road. And uh the other thing I wanted to say, which was funny, this will be a good ending note um with um the road commission, they do deserve it. They answer my emails, every one. Steve Wozlak is awesome. So he does deserve that money. And since he can answer my emails, you guys can too.
Thank you.
Lisa Rozmarnowicz from Hamburg Township.
Thank you. Go ahead when you're ready.
I just want to thank you guys for your thoughtful consideration of all the things that you voted on. I appreciate the fact that you aren't just spending our tax dollars haphazardly as it's happening in Washington DC in Lansing, and I really appreciate that. And I wanted just to emphasize, you guys know this because I know you guys know the Constitution. Government was not instituted to provide things for people. The only thing they were instituted for were to protect our borders, our national security, and to protect our rights. And so there's a lot of people that don't know that or maybe have forgotten that. But I wanted to say that there are organizations like churches. My church has a senior uh transportation ministry. People can call, get rides to wherever they need to go. I was on the board for Love Inc. for several years. Love Inc. has um uh they'll give you money for transportation. There are ministries, five oh one C threes that can help provide those things. And I mean, it's like we're taking tax dollars for specific things for some people, but we don't meet everybody's needs, which isn't really fair, right? So it's not a take from me to give to him. It's let's take, let's find the things, the ministries and the five oh one C threes that have these um services already available for free for people in it, and they want to do it for people because it's part of them giving of themselves. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh any other cards from the room?
No further cards.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, Commissioner, I do not see anybody.
We have one at the table here. Commissioner Deaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From what I heard tonight, I just want everybody to be clear that the five commissioners who voted for that ten grand, it was only for those commissioners. Steve does a great job. I'm one of the few commissioners that's taken a tour over there and worked with all those hardworking road folks. That raise was only going to those commissioners over there. So I just want that to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public and we're going to move on to item fifteen, which is closed sessions to discuss pending litigation, MCL fifteen point two six six. Can I get a motion?
I'm I moved a move into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation pertaining to Forty Fourth Circuit Court, Fifty Third District Court, Wisconsin County Probate Court, the County Livingston Board of Commissioners and Hartland Township, the Livingston County, Livingston County Public Works Department.
Second, Dirk.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on the closed session? Seeing.
You take a five-minute break or so.
That requires a roll call vote.
Does the break require a roll call vote?
No, to go into closed.
Can we go and do we have to take the break before closed session? No.
We have the motion to go into closed, seconded, so if we could.
Take the break and then commence the close session.
Yeah.
Thanks for the thanks for that fine legal opinion, sir. So uh roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakigiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Dirk.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
I move to approve the legal services agreement with Plunkett Cooney to represent the county in the pending litigation filed by the courts and authorize Administrator Byrd to sign the engagement wear on behalf of the county. And authorize Administrator Byrd to sign the engagement wire on behalf of the county.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the topic? Seeing none, I'll ask for those in favor to state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Move, Helserman.
Support Deaton.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask everybody in favor to s- say aye.
Aye.
Good work, everyone. Thanks for hanging out.